Is not quite.
All right, we'll call the Holiday Island City Planning Commission's meeting of October 19, 2021 to order. Let's start out with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lynn, will you roll through the roll call?
Chairman Gees.
Here.
Vice Chairman Pittman.
Here.
Commissioner Elwood.
Here.
Commissioner Graves.
Here.
Commissioner Mills.
Here.
Secretary Dumas.
Here.
All here.
All right, we'll declare a forum. Are there any questions or comments on the agenda?
We approve the agenda as stated.
Ken made a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
There is a second in it? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Agenda is approved. We have minutes of the September 21st meeting to approve. Any minutes for the four minutes?
The motion to approve the meeting, September 21st.
Ken made a motion to approve September 21st meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
There is a second in it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes are approved. Uh, we have no reports, no standing committee reports, no special committee reports, no old business, so we can go on to consider resolution R-21-010, establishing the Holiday Island Master Street Plan. Uh, Lynn, do you want to read?
I'll read that.
The resolution?
The resolution establishing the Holiday Island Master Street Plan, whereas the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, shall have the duty and function of promoting public interest in and understanding of the long-term coordinated municipal planning, and pursuant, and whereas pursuant to ACA 1456-412, Section D, Sub 1, the HICPC has determined that it shall define a master street plan for the city of Holiday Island. And whereas pursuant to ACA 1456-414, Section D, the HICPC may prepare and adopt a master street plan which shall designate the general location, characteristics, and functions of streets and highways. And whereas said roads and streets are visually depicted on the attached map entitled Holiday Island Road and Street Map, which is adopted herewith and made a part hereof, and whereas HICPC recommends the adoption of the attached ordinance by the City Council of Holiday Island. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, Carroll County, Arkansas, the HICPC designates the following master street plan. A, located all within the municipal limits of Holiday Island, Carroll County, Arkansas, and more particularly described as follows. B, the definition of a road or street. For the purpose of this resolution ordinance and attached map, the words "street" or "road" shall mean all roadways, public and private, open for general public travel. Access strides to apartment and commercial complexes shall not be considered as private streets. C, an official map. The Holiday Island Road and Street Maps shall identify all named, and all named road and street names and their relative locations. Designations of main primary routes shall be identified. D, street or road names on preliminary plat. Street or road names shall be shown on the preliminary plat. The street names shown on the final plat shall be consistent with those shown on the preliminary plat. Updating, Section E, updating. The official Road and Street Maps shall be updated by the HICPC and recommended for City Council adoption upon final plat approval of any plat, large-scale development, or planned unit development. Section F, characteristics. Roads hard-surfaced with chip and seal or asphalt shall be of a thickness deemed necessary for the characteristics of the substrate, of width and of width suited to the road base with as originally constructed. Concrete paving and streets shall include curbs. New roads or streets shall have a driving surface of no less than 18 feet wide. Section G, function and use. Roads and streets shall be open for general public travel. Long-term or regularly frequent parking vehicles, trailers, equipment, or materials on the roads and streets is prohibited, passed and approved by the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this day of 2021. Today is the 19th. I have a couple of versions here, or you prepared them?
I have just one here.
Okay.
We can use yours as your.
All right.
All right, is there any discussion on the master street plan?
I had one question. Uh, on G. Said, you know, said it's prohibited. Uh, do we have a penalty for that?
Not, there won't be penalties in the, in the master plan. That'll be something we'll have to put in an ordinance to control that.
Yeah, streets and roads, when we get to that section of the municipal code, there's the whole titles there. I don't remember which number it is, but there's a whole section of the municipal code on streets and roads.
I was gonna ask that same question basically too, because if we adopt any ordinance in regulation of Airbnbs, I think parking on the street needs to be a big consideration.
As far as a, as a plan for the city of Holiday Island, the plan is to prohibit it. So that's why it's stated here that way.
Okay, good.
We plan on it to be prohibited.
Good.
And the basic reason is the streets aren't widening up and we have no curb and gutter or anything, so it would constitute a safety hazard to have anybody parking on the streets. All right, uh, you've all seen the copies of the maps. There's, uh, there's one combined map that will be the master, but then there's, um, different layers of the map that make it easier to see, uh, certain things like the primary roads and secondary roads and stuff like that. It's, it's basically, um, what's already here. We have no additional streets or roads planned this, this time. If we ever get to that point, that'll be added to the master street plan.
And I guess for information, the, uh, the snow route that I had notified or the primary route for that, I got all that information from Kennedy Art. I just took what he had on his, uh, list as priorities and I made those on the map.
So it's hard to tell with this, with the small copy.
Right.
Uh, are feet are collectors in what color? The orange?
The blue.
Blue.
There's only one and it's the, um.
Valley.
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 It connects both ends to, uh, state line and to, um.
For a wild turkey, yeah, okay. And main or primary is in what, dark red?
Dark purple.
Dark purple, okay. And snow routes?
It's in the red dashes.
Red dashes, okay.
Snow routes are white.
Okay.
I had sent an email with those different images.
I'm sure if you looked at it with a PDF online and come up.
And I, I sent those to you. I can send them to you again.
I'm sure I saw it too.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it's, it's so small that in printed form, it's practically worthless. So yes, if we post the PDFs on file, people can enlarge them and see what they need to see.
My intent, once this is passed, is to post all versions on, uh, on our maps page, on our documents for the planning commission, so they can open them up individually.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Are these things gonna be on our regular city, or is it, are we on a separate website?
No, it'd be on the city website, under the City Planning Commission tab, under Documents.
There's already stuff there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I made a motion to approve res- resolution R-21-010.
Point of order, should we allow the public comment before we take a vote?
Ken, anybody, uh, public comments?
Any public comments out there in Zoom land?
Keep reminding you.
Okay. There's, there's no chat and nobody raised their hand, so.
Anybody waiting to join?
Nobody's waiting to join.
Okay.
Nobody yelling on the bell.
iPad doesn't want to say anything.
You don't make a move.
Don't make a motion.
Make a motion, we, uh, approve res- resolution R-21-010.
We have a motion to approve resolution HICPC R-21-010. Do I have a second?
Second.
There is seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, all, wait. Do we roll call vote in the?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman Gees.
Yes.
Commissioner Elwood.
Yes.
Commissioner Graves.
Yes.
Commissioner Mills.
Aye.
Commissioner Pittman. Commissioner Dumas.
Aye.
All right, resolution passes. Next on the agenda is to consider resolution R-21-011, establishing the Holiday Island Land Use Plan. Lynn, would you, uh, read the resolution?
Resolution establishing Holiday Island Land Use Plan, whereas the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, shall have the duty and function of promoting public interest in and understanding of the long-term coordinated municipal planning, and whereas pursuant. ACA 1456-412, Section D, Sub 2. Has determined that it shall define a land use plan for the city of Holiday Island. And whereas pursuant to ACA 1456-414, Sub, Section 1, the HICPC may prepare and adopt a land use plan which may include the reservation of open spaces, the preservation of natural and historic features, sites, and monuments, existing uses to be retained without change, existing uses proposed for change, and the areas proposed for new development. And whereas said plan entitled City of Holiday Island Land Use Plan, which is adopted herewith and made a part hereof, and whereas HICPC recommends the adoption of ordinance 2021-12 by the City Council of Holiday Island. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, Carroll County, Arkansas, the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas Land Use Plan be adopted, passed and approved by the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this day of 2021. Page two is the plan. It's entitled City of Holiday Island Land Use Plan. An introduction. The Holiday Island City Council adopted this planning area map by ordinance 2021-10 on September 21st, 2021, that defined the territory for which the City of Holiday Island will develop and adopt land use zoning ordinances and regulations. This land use plan is the first to be developed for the city of Holiday Island. The Arkansas statute 1456-412 and 414 require that a land use plan be adopted before land use zoning ordinances and regulations are adopted. To date, the city of Holiday Island owns no land or facilities to be identified as its open spaces, no recognized natural or historical features, sites, and monuments, no sites or facilities that may have changed, charged, this is charges, I should say changes.
Changes?
Changes for use attached, no sites or facilities proposed for change, and no plans to propose for new developments. The primary tasks before the newly created City Council and City Planning Commission are to establish the basics needed to ensure that property owners and builders are able to carry out their plans in a seamless manner as the developer of the district moves to dismantle its planning commission. For approximately 50 years, the suburban Holiday Island, excuse me, Holiday, I should say island, wow. The Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District lands and facilities have been managed by its Board of Commissioners and District Manager. The properties within the Suburban Improvement District have been defined by a system of unit block lot designations. It is the intent of the City of Holiday Island that the existing lot and parcel designations be adopted for continuity of identification. Most residential and commercial property in Holiday Island are covered by a declaration of reservations, commonly referred to as covenants, that are unique to the unit in which the property lies. Although these covenants are legal agreements between the property owners and not binding on the city, it is the intent of the Holiday Island City Council to preserve the current declaration of reservations to the limits of the law placed upon municipalities in Arkansas. The City of Holiday Island intends to develop and adopt ordinances and regulations to support the current declaration of reservations to the limits of the Arkansas statutes. It is the intent of the Holiday Island City Planning Commission and the Holiday Island City Council to fully develop this plan over time. There's a section called Reservation of Open Spaces. It states no spaces owned or controlled by the City of Holiday Island for which it can reserve, preservation of natural and historical feature sites and monuments, no natural historic, no natural and historic feature sites and monuments within the city of Holiday Island for which it can preserve, existing uses to be retained without char, without change.
Uh-oh, hold on.
She started it. She was testing the recording.
Hold on. If I can find how to turn it off. Call a recess for a minute.
Yeah, we will be in recess until the recording of the last meeting.
I think I found it.
I have a question.
Is, uh, killed.
I think it's just running right here.
I looked at that. Okay, is, think it's here?
Yeah, I think so. I have to.
Here.
It's, it's last night's meeting, yesterday's meeting.
It's a recording that's playing.
Where the hell do I find it?
Oh, here. No, that's Zoom.
Uh, I thought I was playing it in photos, but.
Yeah, cancel that.
Oh, that did it. Okay, that got it. I, I, I had that running to do an export of it and it finished while we, in the meeting. Sorry about that.
For those of you out in Zoom land, we apologize for the technical, uh, difficulty there. We were testing our audio earlier with a recording of yesterday's meeting and, uh.
Inadvertently.
Inadvertently started, yes.
Yeah, it worked. It was, it was such a good recording that we thought we'd play it again.
And just for the note, I forgot to start my audio opening, so we'll have the audio coming from Zoom for today's meeting. Okay, so I'm gonna continue on with this, uh, title. It says existing uses to be retained without change. I have charge. No sites or facilities controlled by the City of Holiday Island, existing uses proposed for change, no sites or facilities proposed for change, and areas proposed for new development, there are no plans to propose for new development. Then there's, uh, three lines below, designed by the mayor, the chair of the planning commission, and the recorder treasurer.
The, um, let me just point out that, you know, maybe something that everybody already knows, um, there's a lot of work to do on this land use plan going forward. Um, we're rushing it through so that we have the basis established to be able to pass the ordinance adopting the zoning that's, that's, um, integral to the, uh, unit covenants, so that we can start issuing building permits and things like that in relatively new future. So this is, um, this is a kind of a shortcut and process at this time, but it checks all the boxes that we need to check at least, you know.
There are some parcels, aren't they, that, uh, haven't been developed, that haven't been platted or anything, that could become platted in the future and could, uh, we could specify some land use zoning or whatever for those, right?
I believe we have.
And when we get to the city council meeting and you read the actual ordinance that's adopting the zoning and the covenants, there's gonna be a paragraph in the ordinance that says for unzoned and unthought of parcels, um, the planning commission will make some determination. I don't remember exactly how I ordered it, but.
That's something I read already.
Yeah, it's in the ordinance. Uh, basically what we're gonna probably, the planning commission will look at zoning it to be something compatible with the surrounding areas.
It says on natural historic site, they have to be in, on city property, being included. They got that over there, you heard, not.
I, I did some research on that and I couldn't find anything, any guidance in the statutes, whether it was on city property or not, but this is, uh.
I think it's on.
About land use within our city.
They do have those papers at the country club that say something. Well, you also got that big rock down there by, was it, and a tree, which is.
But I, I think the answer, I think, the answer to your question is it does not have to be on city property, because, um, you know, we could pass an ordinance that says that, you know, if we had a historic building down in town, we could pass an ordinance that says you can't tear it down with a historic building.
Well, I just.
Nothing.
You know, like, you know, like that big black rock was there.
That's probably on Hycid-owned land.
It's still, it's still a historical something, feature.
The only thing is, gotta be real careful with that, the law that they, that Arkansas just passed that says, that passed the law so that you couldn't take down Confederate statues, statues, but in essence, you can't take, you can't do anything with anything historical anymore. You can't even, if there's been a flag flying in the corner, you know, by the post office forever, you can't take it down without running it past the State Historical Society or.
They have a issue with this.
They just recently.
Historical.
I think Fort Smith just recently, um, took down a flag stand, a flag display that was, for all practical purposes, abandoned and nobody was maintaining it, and they made them put it back up. So, um, any other discussion on?
Yeah.
This resolution?
For, okay, so about this sentence, under preservation of natural and historical features, sites, and monuments, it says no natural and historic feature sites and monuments within the city of Holiday Island for which it can preserve. You could say that rock is something that could be preserved. You could say the barn is something that could be preserved.
In the rec center, in the sign out front.
Yeah.
But the question that I had was doing the research, what, what makes it historic?
The barn was in 1933.
I understand.
It's like.
Thirty-eight.
Like I said a minute ago, this document needs a lot of work.
Yeah.
And we're saying that at this point, we haven't identified anything to preserve.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that next week you can't pass another resolution adding the barn and.
I, that's, that's what I wanted to hear.
For, for that matter, the hanging oak tree over Bandy could be natural. It can't be cut down.
Right.
Because someone wants to widen the road. You know, there's all kinds of, we have to do the research.
Yeah.
The centromedian at the entrance to Holiday Island.
Exactly. Exactly.
Okay. I just, I just wanted.
Was this getting a little bit too deep into the subject, but is this. This is, this is, uh, separate order.
This plan is part of the resolution 21-11. The ordinance is not attached.
Will be at the next meeting.
All right, got you.
All right. Is there any other discussion on resolution, on this resolution? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll, I'll move to, uh, approve it with the changes in, uh, three places that I noted while I was reading it. The third paragraph on the introduction, third line says charges that may be changes. The next was in the paragraph that starts with, for approximately 50 years, I need to insert the word island between holiday and suburban. And on the last page, retained without change in the existing uses, needs to be a change, not charged.
Okay, we made a motion to approve resolution HICPC R-21-011 with changes as noted.
I said with changes.
That seconded it with any, with the changes. Any further discussion? Any public comment?
Uh, anyone wanna comment out there in the Zoom people? Raise your hand or put it in chat.
Hearing none, we'll.
Okay.
Move.
Call a roll.
Call a roll. We'll move to roll call roll.
Chairman Gees.
Yes.
Commissioner Elwood.
Yes.
Commissioner Graves.
Yes.
Commissioner Mills.
Aye.
Commissioner Pittman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dumas.
Yes.
The resolution passes. That's all the new business we had on the agenda. Uh, public comments, three minutes time left. Any public comments?
Raise your hand. I see none.
Moving on, Commissioner comments?
Thank you, Lynn.
I, one question. Is this the last of all the required things that we have to do before we get into.
We have to do a zoning thing or something.
The zoning will be taken care of in the city meeting in the next meeting.
It's the last, it's the last, it's the last required activity before ordinances for zoning.
That was my question.
On the agenda for the city council meeting, we have.
That happens in a council meeting.
We have, um.
We can suggest them as well.
2021, oh thirteen, declaring an emergency and adopting temporary zoning ordinance.
No. We took the action, the planning commission, to approve the, uh, area, the plant, the map, the land use plan.
Okay.
That was required before we do anything with zoning. Now, the planning commission has approved that, the city council has to approve an ordinance to adopt that plan.
Any other comments? Uh, next regular meeting.
Yes.
The planning commission, yep, November 9.
Three flat.
Yep.
No. Yes, you're right.
Yeah, we'll have a budget worked out before that. All right, motion to adjourn?
I'll move that we adjourn.
Then the move to adjourn. There is a second, okay, we're.
Aye.
Opposed, or adjourned?
Uh, we're just gonna pause the recording and open it back up at six o'clock, okay? Just want everyone on Zoom to know, I'm just putting you on pause. Yeah, I'm gonna stop. No, I'm just gonna pause it and then we'll continue recording when we reopen the meeting.
And then when we.
There we go, okay.
All right, we'll call the city council meeting to order, the regular meeting of October 19th, 2021. Um, we will do the pledge again since we have a new audience on Zoom.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wes, you wanna go to the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Dumas.
Here.
Councilmember Elwood.
Here.
Councilmember Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Pittman.
Here.
All present, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, I'll declare a forum. On the agenda, I'm gonna add one thing, uh, uh. On the agenda, I'm gonna add one thing, understanding committees, because we don't have any other place to put it. Wes does have the financial statements and he can make some comments on that. So with that addition, are there any other questions on the agenda? And will we go entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Will I have a second?
Second.
Can I amend the motion to approve the agenda, Jerry seconded it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the agenda is approved. We have minutes from the August 17th meeting and the September 21st meeting to approve. Any, the minutes have been distributed. Are there any questions on the minutes?
Actually, we had approved August 17th, the last meeting.
We did. Okay, I put a stack in here to approve at this meeting. All right, we only have to approve September 21st then. Please approve.
Second.
Jerry moved to approve the minutes. Lynn seconded it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes are approved. Any ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, or memoriam? Hearing none. There are any from the, the audience on the.
Uh, don't see any hands raised or any chat.
Okay. And we'll move on to reports. Wes, you wanna go with the financial statements? I guess the first comment I can make is that they are financial statements generated by our new accounting software.
Did you say that to us?
Pardon? Did you distribute these?
I sent them out.
Today?
No.
Several days ago.
Oh, okay, okay, that's the one I thought.
Several days ago. How come?
In the last one. Okay, I've got it. Again.
And I get nervous.
You'll have to be nervous in front of us.
Well, I know, but it just happens. Okay, I go through the, you'll see, if you look at the financial statement for the general fund, shows we received 23,758 in September. We spent 7,787. So the revenue, the distributions to us were 15,971 in excess of expenditures, which left a pending balance in the general fund of 105,257. You know, we know so far our revenue is about two-thirds of our annual budget. And we're three-quarters of the way through the year.
So we're lagging a little bit.
We're lagging a little, but not much, considering that we had no revenue other than contributions for the first three months. So I'm thinking we'll probably be up by the end of the year, we'll have 90% or so of what we budgeted for revenue in the general fund. The street fund, we received 15,961 in September, no expenditures. So there is a balance of 27,255 at the end of September. And the revenue there is a little more than half of what we would expect for the year. And actually, there's only six months revenue there. Again, because there was nothing in January, February, or March. There is a list of the checks that were written on the, on the third sheet for the payments journal. And I'll point out that when you look back at our report for the general fund for the month, it shows expenditures of 7,787. For the checks, it shows 7,420, which is less than the expenditure shown in the report. And the reason is, the, in the, in the monthly financial statement, it shows, for instance, wages is gross and it shows payroll taxes is being paid, but it does not include those payroll taxes in the check register.
That makes sense. All right. So how are the payroll taxes paid if they're not paid with a check?
Electronically. You have to pay payroll taxes electronically. You can't pay it with a check.
So is there a payments journal for electronic transfers?
I have not seen one.
Okay.
It probably shows up somewhere.
Yeah. Is that done monthly?
They haven't set it up for, as a report.
Is that done monthly now, the payroll taxes?
I do, probably wouldn't have to. I do it monthly.
It used to be quarter, but I did books.
Right. And, and no more than ours are. Quarterly would probably be sufficient.
If it gets to be confusing in the, in the future to anybody that follows it that close, could you do a journal entry to, add it to the check register, basically?
I don't know that I can, because this is all automatic, it's in the software.
Can you just generate a separate? Form that just include that in this public?
Never mind. I would think that somewhere there should be a record.
The title of the form is general fund and it says payments journal, then it's got the subheading, general fund checking, so maybe there's a feature that could be turned on to include that other journal on this report.
Yeah, I don't know.
That would check out.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Yeah.
CSH sent this report somewhere.
Okay, questions? All right, we don't need to roll down the moving desk, thank you, Wes.
Uh, I will mention it's not on the website yet, but will soon be.
Okay. Jerry, where we stand with broadband grant application?
Okay, I agree with the report this time. As many have seen and participated in, we asked people to do a speed test that we recorded by the state to show gaps in internet coverage. And several people have done that. We also got some anecdotal emails from people that have encountered extreme difficulty getting internet service. Three I might mention. One gentleman, his house, Cox said that they would run cable and internet to his house for $47,000.
You're kidding?
I'll run cable for $47,000.
Another gentleman said that he was quoted, I think 15,000. Then another one, 10,000. And others that didn't say why, but they said, other than they didn't think Cox was reliable, so they built other means, like a T-Mobile hotspot or Newsnet or something like that. So anyway, I shared those with Rodney Valance and he says that those are very important comments that we include in our grant applications, which he said will be completed probably by the end of next week. He's waiting. He's got part of the grant has to be a budget for implementation and whatnot. So he's waiting to get a figure from Carroll County about using their, their polls or lines and soon to get that and plug that in. And he's still waiting on letters from our mayor, Senator Ballinger, and Representative Rowe.
So you're waiting on me for letters? You're gonna write the letter and I'll sign it?
I can do that.
That'd be the most convenient way to do it.
All right, I'll, I'll do that. So anyway, that's encouraging. And as Rodney explained last time, we're, now we're going after two grants. One that just does the engineering study that probably will be more likely to get. And then the other one would be an engineering study plus funding of the project. So anyway, it's coming together.
It's probably not for the, I don't remember the actual addresses of these people that were quoted these extreme amounts of money to run cable to their house, but they're not in remote areas of Holiday Island.
Well, one, one of them was Appaloosa.
Yeah, I could throw a rock through my deck and hit their house.
Yeah.
Yeah, good cable. 47,000 was on Cochise.
Okay.
Wherever that is. And there was one on, the other one was on Valley.
Well, Valley's not far.
No.
And they all have utilities. They are, you know, they have electricity.
Okay, so anyway, we might encourage, encourage people to go on our website. There's a link right on the, I did that, on the homepage, Lynn put it up, where you can do the speed test and then answer, I think there's six questions about your service and.
Do the speed test at eight o'clock in the morning when everybody's on Facebook and checking their emails and everything else.
I had an anecdote that I sent to him that there were nearly 800 interruptions in my internet service in the period one month. And it happens to me every night when I'm trying to work, I'm trying to do something and it just stops. You know, I, I have to wait till it reconnects. And it, it records how many minutes for each interruption and what the total was. Do you recall, was it like six hours worth of downtime? Something like that over a month's time? But I had 798 disconnects in my internet connection.
Wow.
I've never been disconnected.
Well, I have the last two nights, during the middle of the night, because my security system shows a communication failure and it's happened the last two nights.
My weather station does the same thing. Says no internet and then it says we're communicating again. So I get two emails every time it happens.
So how did you count the 798 interruptions? Do you have a software?
I have a little white box attached to my internet that's watching the internet.
Oh.
It was sent to me by Cox.
That's.
By a company called, by a company called Sam Knows, K-N-O-W-S.
They call it their incriminating evidence box.
Cox encouraged me to participate in the program, so I volunteered.
Well, that's nice of them.
It's not good.
They only wanted 2,500 from us to run internet to our house. And I forgot to put that in that thing, I was sort of waiting to go back.
Just send him another email.
This is a test, yeah, probably we could.
I tried going back in, I think it told me that I'd already responded.
Just send him another email, just type out an email and send it to him with that data, that information.
We can put it in the grant application.
Or let your wife go and do it. Excuse the customer. Okay, Lynn, planning commission report, discretion, air mine.
The last meeting that we had about an hour ago, we passed a resolution approving a land use plan and a master street plan. Those are the last two required actions before we can start working on zoning. On my desk for homework is to work on that zoning. I have a copy of, I have five different municipalities that I'm copying from and taking guidance from. And the one that is probably gonna be used is about 50 some pages long that covers defining the terms and defining the zones and how they'd be administered and how the process works. So it's a big document to go through and there are a lot of things that probably don't apply, but that's my next step to work with the larger zoning plan, to bring that for consideration.
Okay, very good, making progress. All right, under old business, we have ordinance 2021-007, establishing wards. It's the third reading. Let's see, I, I would, since this is the third reading, I would ask for a motion to suspend the rules for, to read the entire ordinance and read it by title only.
Take a motion to read ordinance 2021-007 by title only.
I'll second that.
Can I make a motion to read ordinance number 2021-007 by title only? Lynn, the seconded it. Do we need a roll, yes, we need a roll call vote on that.
Okay, councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Since this is short and sweet, I'll go ahead and read the ordinance by title only. Ordinance number 2021-007, ordinance establishing wards for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance? Jerry made a motion to approve the ordinance, do I have a second?
I have a second. Ask for, you're, you're gonna ask for comments?
Any discussion?
How we're done with this and you have to file with the county, right?
We're gonna get the real. Yeah, right. Yeah. Any public comments on the ordinance establishing ward?
Does anyone on Zoom have any comments? I don't see any chat. I don't see any hands raised. Uh, no hands raised, no, no chat.
Okay. Then we'll go, move to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
All right, the motion has passed. And yes, I talked to the county clerk last, let's see, this was, yeah, last week. And she actually called me wondering where we were on this pendulum, anticipating that we didn't know we needed to do it. And we surprised her by being ahead of the game. And so she was happy with that. I need to bring the, we need to sign the ordinance, I need to bring her copy, a signed copy of the ordinance, a copy of the ward map and a legal description of the ward map. And actually, the law says that we have to provide a digital version of the map provided by GIS. But she said she would call GIS and do that because they work together on overlaying maps and stuff like that to their, you know, loading precincts and all that kind of stuff. So we're in good shape. We're, we'll be ready for the next election.
Not quite.
Well, from a ward establishment standpoint. All right. All right, next on the agenda is new business opioid settlement participation forms. I'm not going to distribute the forms or anything, but every city in Arkansas got two sets of forms that are virtually identical with the exception of the company that they're negotiating the settlement with. But this is part of the kind of national and then boils down to the state settlement with the drug companies for over prescribing opioids and creating a major health crisis in the country. And there's, I don't know, you know, billions of dollars at stake. And Arkansas will be getting their share. And these participation forms basically say that the city of Holiday Island agrees to be a party in the suit. And so that if there's a settlement, we'll get some money out of it. I'm not, I don't know how it would, how it will be a portion of. I did call Justin Eitman because the forms that I have to sign say that I have read and understand the settlement agreement, which I have not. And I don't even have a copy of it. And if I, I can imagine it's this thick and I wouldn't understand it if I was reading it. Justin is working on this for several other cities. And he said he would tell me when he understands it and has no problems with these forms. And then under his advice, we'll sign it and participate.
I believe when I was on the Muni League call where they were talking about this, that I asked the question, when would we be able to see the settlement? And they, the answer was, we're working on it. So someday soon.
The municipal league is, is basically, I don't want to say they're driving this, but they are definitely coordinating it. And they want a hundred percent participation from all Arkansas cities if possible because that level of interest will probably affect how much money everybody gets.
I, I gathered it might, that a state might get money based on per capita of the cities participating in the settlement, who agree to participate in the settlement. Sounded that way.
You know, I don't think this is a windfall that we're going to be able to use to fix waterloo problems. I think it's going to have, you know, we will probably get money and we will have to use it for some sort of public education program or actual drug treatment programs or something like that. It's going to have to be used to help mitigate the actual crisis. But still.
Money's money.
Money's money, and I'm sure that there's a need here.
The fire department prevents those expenses. Whatever it's called.
In our hand.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I would have those in need.
It'd be a good place for it.
Yeah. So we'll see where it goes. I thought I'd bring it up just so everybody knew that it was on the ballot. All right, next on the agenda is consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero eleven, declaring an emergency and adopting the master street plan. So does everyone have a copy of that ordinance? I'll have one copy. Let's see, I would, hold on, this is ordinance. Ordinance is not that long.
One and a half pages in the mail.
So I will, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rule for requiring three readings, declaring an emergency, and then reading the ordinance.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings and declaring an emergency. And Lynn seconded it. Any discussion?
Uh, just one question. But does it have to have an emergen, oh, it does have the emergency clause. Never mind.
Okay, no further discussion. I don't think we'll ask for public comment. It's just a motion to suspend the rules. So we'll call a vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwin.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills. Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so we'll go ahead and read the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, do we need a motion to approve the emergency clause?
Which is did.
That did that? Okay, all right, that's fine.
Oh, okay, so that was.
That was for the emergency.
Yeah.
Oh, suspending three readings and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that satisfies that, okay. That's fine. Thank you.
An ordinance establishing, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero eleven, you want me to read it once or you want?
I don't care.
Okay, I can read it or Lynn can read it.
Want me to?
Okay, go ahead, read it.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash double oh seven.
No, oh, eleven now.
We're on, we're on a roll, eleven. Okay, not seven.
We have the third reading, seven already.
Okay. Then I need to get that to the roof. Eleven. Okay, ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash zero eleven. An ordinance establishing the city of Holiday Island master street plan, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas Arkansas municipal planning statute, ACA fourteen fifty-six four oh one and following, require that planning commissions preparing, prepare a planning area map and description designating the area within the city's territorial jurisdiction for which they will make studies and prepare plans and recommended ordinances and regulations. And whereas, after due consideration, the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, has approved by resolution, HICPC R twenty-one dash oh ten, a master street plan. And whereas it is the desire of the city council that said master street plan be formally approved by ordinance, thus establishing the city of Holiday Island master street plan. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Section one, that the map entitled Holiday Island Road and Street Map, which is attached here to and made part hereof, and the description thereof which follows be and hereby approved and adopted. The city recorded treasure shall maintain two signed copies and a digital image for public inspection. Section two, the master street plan designates the following. A, located all within this municipal limits of Holiday Island, Carroll County, Arkansas, and more particularly described as follows. B, definition of road or street. For the purpose of this resolution, ordinance and attached map, the words street or road, roads shall mean all roadways, public and private, open for general public traffic. Access drives to apartment and commercial complexes shall not be considered as private streets. C, official map. The Holiday Island Road and Street Map shall identify all named road and street names and their relative locations. Designations of main primary routes shall be identified. D, street or road names on preliminary flat. Street or road name shall be shown on the preliminary flat of any large scale development or planned unit development. The street names shown on the final flat shall be consistent with those shown on the primary flat updated. Official Road and Street Map shall be updated by the HICPC and recommended for city council adoption upon the final flat approval of any flat, large scale development or planned unit development. Characteristics. Roads hard surface with chip and seal or asphalt shall be of a thickness deemed necessary for the characteristics of the substrate and of wood suited to road based width as originally constructed. Concrete paving of streets shall include curves. No roads or streets shall have a driving surface of less than eighteen feet. Chief function use. Roads and streets shall be open for general public traffic. Long-term or regularly frequent parking of vehicles, trailers, equipment or materials on roads and streets is prohibited. Section three, severability. The provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared separable. And if any section phrase or provision shall be declared or held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect the remainder of the sections, phrases or provisions. Section four, emergency clause. The need to make use of the provisions of ACA fourteen fifty-six four oh one of the Arkansas Code of nineteen eighty-seven ammended as amended to adopt, adopt a city of Holiday Island master street plan in order to adopt and enforce plans for the coordinated, adjusted and harmonious development of the city of Holiday Island and its environs and activities associated with urban planning is immediate and an emergency as hereby declared to exist. And this ordinance shall be enforced and effect from and after the date of its passage. Passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas in its nineteenth day of October two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, and for the record, the map is attached to the ordinance. Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero eleven?
So moved.
Jerry made a motion. Jerry seconded it. Any discussion? Discussion from the public?
Uh, any discussion on the red, the ordinance twenty oh twenty-one eleven about street map? Make sure. I don't see any chat on it. I don't see any hands raised. Okay.
Having no discussion, we'll call a vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwin.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Right, the ordinance passes. Here's a signed copy.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We did have a comment that was made while we were reading the ordinance about the ward ordinance. And it was Ms. Sherman. And she wanted to know, when will the decision be made for how one votes? I guess with regards to the wards. And I, I responded on chat to her that it would come up in a future meeting as a resolution or ordinance. Is that what you would agree?
Yeah, I'm not sure her, what the total context of her question, but we will be considering an ordinance establishing position one and position two of the council members and things like that. As far as being notified as to what ward you're in for the election and where the voting precinct is going to be, that will be done by the election commission.
But we also have to decide which positions would be voted by warden, which would be voted that large, right?
Right.
Okay.
And we need to have discussion on that.
So that's further clarification.
Default, default is you select by a word and vote. And honor that.
Yeah. I didn't read the.
I have it all here for later.
Yeah. All right, um, okay. I don't know if it was a default, there's just options.
It's, yeah, we can talk about it later.
Yep.
All right, next on the agenda for consideration is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one two, declaring an emergency and adopting a land use plan. I would entertain a motion that we suspend the rules requiring three readings of the ordinance and adopt the emergency clause.
So moved.
Lynn made a motion. Pat seconded it. Will, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwin.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman. All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Uh, before we move any further then. Okay, all right, um, you want to read the ordinance?
Sure. Okay. Ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash zero twelve. An ordinance establishing the city of Holiday Island land use plan and declaring an emergency. Whereas Arkansas municipal planning statute, ACA fourteen fifty-six four oh one. At what's, how do you pronounce that?
It's et sec. And it is Latin for and following.
Okay, and following, okay. Require that planning commissions prepare, your planning area map and description designating the area within the city's territorial jurisdiction for which they will make studies and prepare plans and recommend ordinances and regulations. And whereas, after due consideration, the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, has approved by resolution, HICPC R twenty-one dash oh eleven, a land use plan. And whereas it is the desire of the city council that said land use plan be formally approved by ordinance, thus establishing, thus establishing the city of Holiday Island land use plan. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that the plan entitled city of Holiday Island land use plan be hereby approved and adopted. The city, the city recorded treasure shall maintain two signed copies and a digital image for public inspection. Be it further ordained, ordained to have the, that due to the requirement that the city have a zoning ordinance, which will follow after the land use plan in place by twelve one two thousand twenty-one in order to assume responsibility for issuing building permits. The need to adopt this land use plan is immediate and an emergency is hereby declared to exist. And this ordinance shall reinforce and affect immediately upon passing. Passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island on this.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth day of October two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one two?
Point of order, does the plan need to be read into the record? Page two? Page three?
I don't can. I don't know that it needs to be, but.
Okay.
It can. Do you want it read into the record?
I don't require it.
Okay. Does anybody feel it needs to be read? Okay. It'll be posted on the website if anybody wants to read it.
It's already on there.
All right, um, we have a motion. Who made the motion?
I'll move that we approve.
I'll second.
Lynn moved to approve ordinance 2021-012. Lynn has seconded it. Any discussion? Any discussion from the...
Any discussion from anybody on Zoom? I don't see, no hands, and...
You can call a vote.
No chat.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor? Okay, ordinance 2021-012 approved. Um, I have one copy here signed. The ordinance says we have to have two copies, so if you have a copy, I can sign it. Well, I do, I didn't have the date. I just wrote the date in. Okay.
And the plan also has a space for the date.
Yeah.
And the plan has a space for your signature as well. Last page.
I feel like when I'm all done with this, I need to give the ceremonial pen to Lynn. Well, you should have eleven pens there. I have one letter in my hand. Okay. All right, moving on. Next on the agenda is a consideration of ordinance 2021-014, establishing a police department and authorizing a contract with the sheriff.
Thirteen, sir.
Oh, I scratched, oh, one. Ordinance, uh, 2021-013, declaring an emergency and adopting the temporary zoning ordinance. Do the, uh... Yes, there's an emergency clause, so do I have a motion to suspend the rules requiring free readings and adopt the emergency clause for this ordinance?
So moved.
But, Lynn, it moved.
I see.
Ken seconded it. Any discussion? We'll call a vote. Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor? Okay, you want to go ahead and read the ordinance? Sure. Ordinance number 2021-013, an ordinance declaring an emergency and establishing different zoning requirements for the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Whereas, zoning requirements for residential and commercial construction are necessary for the orderly development of a community. And whereas, the Holiday Island Planning Commission, established by the developers and currently responsible for issuing building permits, will cease, will cease to provide that service as of December 3, 2021. And whereas, the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, is currently developing a land use plan that will establish a basis for zoning, and whereas, the aforementioned land use plan cannot be completed by December 3, 2021, when the city must assume responsibility for issuing building permits. And whereas, the current Holiday Island Planning Commission enforces the zoning restrictions embedded in the unit declaration of reservations when issuing building permits. Now, we are ordained by the city council of the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that the City of Holiday Island will adopt on an interim basis the zoning restrictions found in the unit declaration of reservations for all units in Holiday Island. And we have further ordained, ordained that construction in any unit, parcel, or property within the area indicated on Holiday Island planning area map that is not currently restricted by declaration of reservations will be reviewed by HICPC for its suitability and compatibility with adjacent units. We have further ordained that the need to establish zoning requirements in order to begin issuing building permits is immediate and an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be enforced and effective immediately upon passing. Passed and approved by the City Council of Holiday Island on this date of nineteenth of December, 2021. October. October. What did I say? Excuse me. October. All right, um, I need to make a slight correction to the, uh, to this ordinance. Since it was drafted, I've had a discussion with, um, with Mickey Feinfield, and the December third date is not a date certain as far as the planning commission is concerned.
So how about changing the vibe to as soon as?
In that particular paragraph, I think if we just scratch the December third, just scratch the third and leave it as December.
Gotcha.
And not, and just not be date certain. It will be sometime, and then in the second, um, the second time a date is mentioned, um, I think it's okay to leave December third in there because we want to be ready by then, you know, so we're ready. So up in the second paragraph, it's, we're going to strike, scratch the third, so that it'll read, will cease to provide that service as of December, 2021.
Do we have any sense of when, like, how long that might be passed? Is it a vote? Is it before then?
It won't be before then, um, and I, I, I guess I'm not really in a position to, to speculate or offer any opinion as to, or any real information as to what they're working on, but Mickey said they're, they're working with their attorney. They are, they are incorporated, and, um, so there's a process that they have to go through to dissolve. They're working on that. Um, our, the city assuming responsibility for issuing building permits is not conditional on their, that planning commission going away.
Okay.
They can continue to exist forever. We just need to have a handoff of the responsibility, which I'm sure will still happen in December. So with that correction, do I have a motion to, uh, adopt ordinance 2021-013?
Any motion to adopt ordinance number 2021-013?
With that, one correction. Ken made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Lynn seconded it. Any discussion? Any discussion from the public?
Anyone on the, on Zoom want to chime in? I don't have any chat, and let me make sure if I have a, um... No hands raised.
Okay. So, call for the, we'll call a vote. Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor? Okay. Does your version actually have the date in there? No, it's, it's got access. Something will have to put the actual date in and sign that later. Okay. Next on the agenda is ordinance 2021-014, an ordinance establishing a police department and authorizing a contract with the sheriff. Uh, let's see. It doesn't have, it doesn't have an emergency clause, so... This is October.
January is approved.
I may have to withdraw this and resubmit it next month with the emergency clause. We would have to have the contract by the end of the year to be effective January first, so I'm going to...
We couldn't amend it?
Yeah, I'd say, can we amend it right here? We can copy the language, well?
You have to explain it.
We can, we can do it in the November meeting with an emergency clause. It'll be, it'll be effective immediately. That still gives us all of December to, to...
And may more information, may more information become the life that you want to make more provisions to this.
Right.
Okay.
So do you still call it establishing a police department even though it's just in a, a contract with the sheriff?
Yeah, and, um, actually, um, Justin drafted this for us.
Okay.
Uh, we have to have a police department in order to have a district court. And, um, it's, it's, again, it's the way the law was written. The law says that if you have a police department and you don't have a district court, you can enter into an, an agreement with another jurisdiction. And, uh, I, I guess when they wrote the law, they just assumed that everybody would have a police department. And, uh, so Justin said that if we establish a police department, um, but don't, um, appropriate staff in it and, uh, contract with the, um, with the county to provide police protection, you know, under our police department, then, um, that would meet the intent of the law.
So are you the acting chief of police?
Um, I don't know that we need one. We'll have a contract.
We don't have to have any facility or anything like that.
Not, no. A contract with the sheriff is quite adequate. So I'll resubmit that with the emergency clause next, uh, next month.
It has to, has to be in fact by one day or...
Yes. Um, and just a side note on that, Justin is drafting the, um, interlocal agreement for us to take to, uh, Eureka Springs to work out the details on the district court. So we'll probably review that in the November meeting. All right, that's all of the ordinances. Um, building code, um, I put this on the agenda for discussion only. Um, you know, I really don't intend to go through this other than to let everybody know that I'm still working on it. I gave a copy of this to Mickey Feinfield because I, you know, he's been issuing building permits forever here in Holiday Island and knows, you know, more about, um, the requirements and everything. Um, building codes, if you look at different cities, some building codes are very short and sweet, some, you know, pretty much cut and paste everything that's in the Arkansas Fire Protection Code. They cut and paste it into their own, uh, municipal code, which is redundant and maybe even dangerous if you're not updating your code when the state updates theirs. So, um, Mickey, I talked to Mickey just the other day, and, uh, he said he has, uh, said it looked pretty good, but he's made several markups and has several suggestions. So, um, he and I will be getting together here in the near future, and, uh, you know, we really don't need to, um, to do this, you know, like this month, but by the time we start issuing building permits, we'll have to have something to inspect to...
Does your proposal have sections in it where we adopt the National Electric Code, the plumbing codes and all that? Good, in name only, so we don't...
I gave everybody a copy. I sent out a copy.
Yeah, it's, it's been a while, sorry. I forgot.
I spent a lot of time reading it.
Yeah, but it's not that lengthy because mostly what I do do is adopt the National Electric Code, the National Plumbing Code, National Gas Code, Arkansas Fire Protection Code, which is a very, very comprehensive building code. It gets into everything, and it references the International Building Code. So if you're just referencing all those codes, you've pretty much covered it. The things that are specific to our, um, there are some things that are specific to our situation here, um, like, um, we, uh, the, the Arkansas, or the, the general building codes don't require that you put rebar in driveway concrete. We do here, or historically, Holiday Island has tried to enforce that, and that you put the rebar up on, like, stanchions or whatever they call them. Stands to make sure that it's actually in the concrete and not just laying on the ground under the concrete and stuff like that. We do that because of the instability of the concrete here or of the, of the substrate. You don't put in rebar, after a couple of years, your driveway will just see full cracks.
I've already been there.
Yeah, and, um, I don't put much reference in here to footings because I really didn't find very much reference in any of the building codes to footing standards and footing inspections and stuff, but Mickey has it, so we'll be adding that to, to this.
I know that's one of the common favors here in Holiday Island, is on the foundations where we are.
The foundations, the footings, the footings and the driveways have to be footing right or your house isn't gonna...
It's gonna be going down again.
You have a section that refers to high sit for the water and sewer connections? Okay?
Yeah.
I didn't read those because you said you were just, you were still in the process of developing.
Yeah, other than Mickey's markups, I'm pretty well done with it.
Let us know when you're done, and then I'll read it.
I have a question, and it, maybe it's because of my general unfamiliarity with building anything at all, or construction or anything like that. I have had contractors out to my house to do various small projects inside and outside. How does a person know when they need a permit? I, I didn't find it very clear.
Um, great question.
I think that's the number one question people have, and it's the number one... I think that's the number one question people have and it's the number one issue with enforcement is people don't know when they need to have a permit, especially, I mean, if you're just repairing or adding on or, you know, revitalizing or whatever, rehabbing.
Contractor tell you you needed one?
No, but a lot of contractors would rather not fool with it.
I know, that, that's the.
You never, you never know who you're dealing with either.
With that said, I have had people call me already and ask me, um, if they needed a, a building permit for this or a building permit for that, and I give them Mickey's number.
Yeah, you say, I don't know.
So, it is a very good point and I will make a note here.
If that could be spelled out just a little bit clearer, I think it would be good.
In simple terms, like you're changing the perimeter.
Layman terms.
You're changing anything attached to the outside of the home, which would affect its perimeter. Then you have to decide if you're going to mess around. If I'm gonna change a faucet, is that the same thing as adding a new plumbing line?
Yeah, and, and I did read some, some building codes did have some definition like that. If it's, if it's plumbing repair, you don't need a building code or a building permit. Um, even if you're doing minor remodeling like drywall repair or something like that, you don't need to. But if you're doing anything structurally internally or externally, you need a permit and, and stuff like that, so. It is a good point.
And another, and my, my second question of a general nature is, uh, are we going to require that people doing work out here, plumbers, electricians, contractors, building contractors, whatever, uh, be licensed or permitted by the city?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Will that be in here somewhere?
It should be in here. I think that is in here, but you don't remember.
I don't remember reading it, but I could have missed it.
It's either in here or it's in the zoning ordinance, one of, one of the other, but, uh, because they do require that now that they be.
Which would help protect people out here if they, in order to get a permit, they would have to use the, use a licensed permitted person, I guess? Or have them go through the process of getting a license from us where their credentials could be checked or something? Is that it?
Yeah, I thought that was said in here, but it may be from a different, somebody, some other city.
And I could have missed it. I'm not saying I read it.
They need to have, all contractors have to have their license on the bottom with the city.
Okay.
Can we as a city mandate that those licensed contractors be insured to protect from liability?
Good question. Bonded and insured.
In my current employment, all our contractors had to be insured, so if they fell, they, they had their coverage. They didn't sue us for their medical.
Yeah, I, I don't believe that the city gets into that.
Okay.
I don't remember reading, uh, contractors being bonded anywhere. You know, if, I, I think that's between
The homeowner.
The customer, you know, and the contractor.
How do you check that?
You ask for a copy of their insurance plan.
Insurance, okay.
That shows they have a certain amount of liability coverage for their employees.
So, good, good question. Uh, Mickey may have already thought that, but maybe something to do something to hold it with me. Anyway, we should, by next week or next month's meeting, that should be ready to go down. And then the health and sanitation code is a lot thicker.
Lot longer.
And, um, you know, there, there may be things in here that, um, and I, believe me, I'm soliciting input from everybody. There may be things in here that we don't want to tackle right off the bat. You know, we don't have to eat the whole elephant in one sitting, you know, we can piecemeal this.
There are quite a few people out here that, um, have opposition to the trash collection stuff, you know that.
Definitely.
Uh, I was wondering whether there's any opportunity to allow two vendors at least instead of just a single vendor?
I don't think anybody does that.
Yeah, I, I would, I would like to say no, um, but I think it's open for discussion.
Good.
And, uh, um, you know, we can solicit input and, and, uh, you know, we can, we can, we can talk about it. Uh, I have to sit down with the, uh, with the Carroll County Solid Waste District and, um, understand, um, the, how comprehensive, um, the services that they provide. Because I think that there are some things that the city is going to need and want that the other carriers don't provide. Things like recycling and, um, tires, old tires. They have, you know, Carroll County Solid Waste has got a tire collection site. Um, I think, but I'm not positive that if, um, somebody, um, dumps a pickup, uh, pickup truck load of, uh, trash at the end of one of our cul-de-sacs, I believe that Carroll County, um, comes out and cleans that up at no cost to the city.
And if they toss it over the side of Thunderbird Drive?
Hmm, it may be a little bit hard to convince to, to do that, but I, but I'm pretty sure. I'm, I'm ninety, ninety percent sure that Carroll County has already come out here and cleaned up some dump sites for us. And, um, so if they're gonna provide that service, then I think they're entitled to the customer base, so.
Well, I mean, mentioning about the other providers, uh, some of them that I've seen, I don't think they have the capability to do recycling. And, you know, at least we've got the, the new.
Well, I know, I know probably the smallest one, Ace, takes recycling that anybody gives them to Carroll County Solid Waste.
I think, I think it would be well, and what happened, you talked to the director over there, trying to schedule one of our meetings, to get us agreed on the services.
We could probably do that at the next meeting.
Probably schedule, or their cost.
Yeah, I think we'd like to see a draft cost schedule.
Were you gonna do that? Were you gonna make a spreadsheet comparing the costs of the dining?
I could do that. I haven't, you know, I didn't know I was going to.
But, but we should negotiate a price with them, shouldn't we?
What?
I mean, because that, that would be the thing to do, not just take their pamphlet price, but negotiate a price if they're gonna get all the business out here.
Every city out here, every city in Carroll County has got a different plan to Carroll County Solid Waste.
Well, I mean, if you want to be fair of, of opening it up to these smaller providers, have each one of them present a, uh, proposal of what they can provide and at what cost.
Well, we, I think we need to have a list of what we need and then they put a price tag on it.
Yeah.
I, I think it would be better to have them come out and tell us what they provide.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you right now that I'm not very much in favor of anybody other than Carroll County Solid Waste.
I'm not, I'm not either.
And, and, and the reason why is because, you know, the district, you know, the suburban improvement district has no legal responsibility for solid waste disposal. The city does. The city is responsible for the, for, for whoever handles our waste to dispose of it in compliance with all state and federal, uh, environmental, uh, codes.
Which is precisely why we need to interview them.
And we don't have the resources to have four different carriers in here and follow their trucks to whatever they're doing with it and, uh, and know that it's being disposed of properly.
Well, you also have to have.
In Carroll County, we have the assurance that, you know, that comes with them being a solid waste authority licensed by the state.
The other thing you gotta take into consideration is every other city in Carroll County uses it and they have an agreement, uh, and I don't.
We need to. We put out a request for proposal and tell them what is going to be required and then.
You can do that.
City, what sort of response I can.
Do you know somebody that's in this, in this room that's qualified to put together a proposal? Something that involves, uh, pollution, control and ecology? I, I'm not gonna do it.
I think we, I think if we.
You'd have to hire a consultant or somebody to do it, in my opinion.
If we have them come in and have them tell us what services they provide and then we can, we can make a spreadsheet and send that out and see where the other ones fall in if you want to go that far and ask for, and that would be a kind of proposal.
Ask for a, a in-person proposal.
No, first requirement, primary is are they certified or whatever the right word is, waste disposal facility?
No.
And if they say no, then they're disqualified. It's simple.
Yeah.
Or they give us a whole harmless agreement.
Uh, no, we can't, we can't be held harmless. We are responsible.
Yeah.
That's true. So, I, I would like to have Carroll County authorities to help tell us who to leave ours. Wait, and if you don't want to get into prices at that time, that's fine. The services they provide.
I think services is first and the cost is second too.
I think being in compliance with the law.
Yeah, well, they, they would have to convince us that they were. Yeah, I know, there's also the issue, that's the other thing I wanted to bring up. I know there's also the issue, and I read it in this Title V, uh, that we need to control knowing that everybody is paying for a service. A, a, the same kind of service. Uh, and that, that's a control point and it's made more difficult if you have more than one carrier. I certainly understand that.
And, um.
You can also have the issue of, of these great heavy trucks that pull up our roads.
Well, that's, that's an incentive for us to only have one carrier inside. It, uh.
The only thing that I saw and planned, I, I, I didn't see anything about the commercial dumpsters, dumpsters. Was it that, would we include that in that?
The roll-off boxes? Of them, they have enough, the big regular dumpsters.
Well, there's dumpsters and then there's roll-off ones that they're using in construction sites, which I don't think we want to get into. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. I think that's a totally separate business, isn't it?
I think it's a separate business.
Yeah.
I don't know, and, and again, we could find out if we had Carroll County come in and tell us what they do.
Well, I, I'm all for Carroll County, but I just think that we need to listen to these other people just out of a sense of fairness.
I do too. There's, I mean.
Maybe we did a workshop.
We could put one or more of them out of business by going with Carroll County, seriously.
Could be, but if, uh, they're gonna have to have a real good argument. If I'm the one going to jail because they created a super fund site, um.
Well, then we should, we should be able to listen to them to have them tell us.
What if I, what if I?
The, the thing is, they, I, I am not, I am not a, uh, environmental engineer. They could come in here and tell me that, you know, the moon is made of cream cheese and I'd have to believe them. I don't, I don't know.
You don't have to believe them, you just need to listen to them.
And, you know.
So, if vendor C says, I take my, my waste, your waste to Carroll County Waste District to dispose of, and the reason I'm cheaper is because my overhead's lower.
Do you come and pick up the, uh, the metal and, you know, the stuff you put out on?
I'll pick up everything.
And if you have a big item, just call me. I'll be at your house.
And I take it to Carroll County Waste and they dispose of it properly. And I'm cheaper because my overhead's lower.
I may just be a mom and pop, but I'm trying to do a good job. And I don't have a big truck that tears up the roads either.
I have several of them do.
Several of them do. You're right. But I, I'm with Jerry. I just think we ought to listen to all who wants to apply.
I just hope it won't change the vote, but I think it's fairness.
I, I said, if you can give a list of what they do and give an arrow down and we can put out a request for proposal and say, do we furnish this kind of service? Do you do these then? What's your price?
We have a comment from the Zoom. Can I read it? Um, Ms. Sherman says, suggestion, take a look and gather data as to the recycle center that the city of Rogers put together and the benefits the city financially. It is one carrier only. Is, and is it one carrier only? Going to their city recycle center.
Well, there was an article in the paper in the last couple weeks about a city selecting the carrier and some of the reasons why they ran with that.
Was that Dim Gazette or?
Pardon?
Was it Dim Gazette?
It was Dim Gazette. I don't know if it was Rogers from London. I don't remember.
Oh, we can find that article and pull it out.
But I mean, that, that's, we don't have, we don't have to eat this one yet, until next year.
Yeah, I mean, that, we can, I can take it out for now and just say reserved until we make a decision.
Actually, that'd probably be the best solution temporarily till we get some of these other things under control.
We need to get through the building permits.
It's not, not that high priority. I agree.
District court, we got a full load going on. Just out of curiosity, you have, you know, I know they can't hold us harmless because they go off. Our city's named as additional insurers on Carroll County General Avenue and Thomas. I mean, they can't, they can't hold us harmless, but they can certainly.
Cover the bill.
Cover the bill, which is all we need. I don't know. If it's a big enough account, I would think that could, the, um, because these things are, if you know, if you handle a super fund site claim like I have, they are unbelievably expensive.
Yeah, and.
Would exceed our budget for the next, for the rest of our lives.
The county, Carroll County has already been involved in one fiasco and with that, um, landfill that went broke and, um, and they tried to, the bondholders tried to get eighteen dollars a year out of every property owner. And the court struck back.
Well, didn't Bella Vista have a big toxic waste, waste site of some sort?
Stump dump.
Stump dump, yeah, that was.
That was just a riverbed fire.
Now, one of the places that I had is, is somewhat unrelated to this, but it's maybe related too. It's the Spring cleanup day. Now, that's a district and Carroll County, right?
Carroll County.
Oh.
I think it's just Carroll County Solid Waste. It's just something they do today.
So, is that gonna change? Are we gonna be involved in that? Is that the district?
It's only for their customers.
That's, that's it. They will do that on a regular basis twice a year.
I don't think the district has anything to do with it.
It's just their customer.
The service they provide to their customers.
That's why I want them to come in.
Some of it is, uh, I think, for you to know.
I think we need to fight them over something.
Yeah.
Tell them, give us a slideshow and tell us what the hell they do. And, and just give us an estimate on what their price would be. Uh, I know if you have, uh, what they call it, um, mandatory or, you know, single, their rainfall's bound for what it is now.
If they get everybody?
The, uh, the one thing that, you know, I think that we're, one area where we're a little unique from the other cities and, and the county is that we have a lot of part timers here or weekenders here that.
You gotta provide something for them.
Yeah, we want to have some opportunity for them to have a, you know, per bag, maybe buy one's bags from Carroll County.
I know, I've got two neighbors that, I mean, they spend, maybe a weekend every other month. They certainly don't want to spend the same amount that I do, the trash pickup. They just put it in one bag, put it in the trunk of their car and take it back to Kansas City.
I think there's quite a few people that bag their trash and take it to the place and bury it.
Yeah, we had that too, but you, you can't make exceptions to that.
I know. I know. I understand.
Maybe you can make some kind of accommodation.
But for part-timers, we got, we're a lot of part-timers here, so.
I've reminded him, he's been in his ways almost a year and a half. For him to, you know, it's.
Which is gonna be tricky.
It's not, it's not an easy road.
It's gonna be tricky to figure out who's part-time and who's not.
I don't know which one of the places we live, but we lived someplace one time where it was, it was a city. But you bought bags from the city. You bought trash bags from the city. They were a specific color.
Doesn't Eureka do that? I think you do that with Eureka.
You know, there was so much bag and you could, you know, put out one bag a week or one bag a year. They didn't care.
Just how many bags you had.
As long as you're buying the bags from them, but you put something out in a different color bag, they'll walk right past it.
The only, the only problem with any of these things we're talking about is there are people who will figure out how to feed it.
No.
And they will not have trash served. That could be a physical problem.
If we get, if we get ninety-eight percent, we're, you know, we're doing good. No city probably is doing any better than that.
I had two or three meetings with the, with the people that bagged them.
Well, I know this isn't gonna be popular. This might be the first truly controversial thing we do. And after that, you know, everybody will hate me, but.
I think you can put it off till the first quarter.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. I was just showing pictures of the, of the crap that's dumped around Holiday Island right now.
There's all kinds of things, right? And you, with these Airbnb things we got. These, a lot of these people that didn't want to sign up before because, you know, they're not here all the time. But they're, they're doing the Airbnb. You better have a rate like that because you don't have a method.
Is there any other, we got, um, we got all the way to page one. Is there anything else in here that gives people cause for concern at this point? There's a section in here on tree trimming that I was going to, um, I was gonna put off, too, until, you know, I just, I got two complaints very recently about, um, tree trimmers or brush trimmers or whatever you wanna call them. Two men in a pickup truck and trailer clearing brush out of, in one case it was a house on State Line. That's for sale now. And they trimmed all the brush and just threw it across the road.
Oh, yes.
The lot next to the lot that Holiday Island, back the stretch is trying to sell. And so they came to me wanting me to do something about getting that, you know, those tree trimmings pulled out of there. They have no authority to. And as of right now, that's on private property. That's a, a lot that somebody owns. So he may have given them permission to dump the stuff.
What about, like we had the ice storm and several trees, uh, came over and tree limbs and debris. Is there anything in the, in the plan for that?
How are you supposed to dispose of tree trimmings, branches and what have you? Is there a way?
Those tripping with branches, yeah. So I called Kenny and asked him to come up and throw it through this plant.
Oh, a small river. I mean, that, that will be an issue.
You haul that to Eureka Springs to their recycle?
Well, if it's relatively small, the ice, it doesn't charge for that. Cannot do it. Well, you just get.
Not if it's down the hill in the back of my house, they won't get it.
No, no, but I mean, before that, we're waiting on your house.
Eureka will take it. I called the city office.
They'll go to the back of my house, go down the hill and retrieve all those huge branches that have been cut off?
You've gotta haul it in there.
Well, you're part of the problem.
I guess I am.
Well, it, it, I, even I have to go back and read how I, how I left this. But I can tell you from a, again, from a city perspective, we want to discourage, if not prohibit, people from, um, jumping grass clippings, leaves, tree branches, anything in the woods. And, uh, you know, people that live along the golf course, every fall you'll see them dragging their leaves across the pathway and melting them in the, in the woods. And if they get a branch, the wind blows a branch out of their tree, they'll drag it across the pathway and throw it in the woods. And, you know, if you, if your lot backs up to the woods, you're gonna be doing the same thing. We are creating an enormous fire load here in Holiday Island. And if we ever have a fire, um, out in the woods, it's going to be a mess. And that's why I'd say we, we need to discourage that. But, but like you said, if you're going to discourage it or flat out prohibit it, you have to give people an alternative.
Yeah, that's exactly it. My point entirely.
So, now, what about open burning? Is that in your, talking about open burning?
Only if it's a approved incinerator.
That's gonna be an issue in my neighborhood.
Well.
All the, all the other people that, uh, that don't put them out on the street, they put them in their ditch.
Yeah, burn in the ditch.
I've got three-fourths of the acre I burn on with the fire department's permission.
I was told if I wanted to get rid of some tree limbs in the lot across the street from my house where they took down some trees, the fire chief, Bob Clave at the time, told me, he says, we'll just have them burn it in the middle of the lot. So I, I don't, and I didn't feel good about it either, so we didn't do it.
Anyway. So, a lot of good questions. Um, mark up, you know, send, send me your comments. Read it. Read it and send me your comments and your concerns because. I don't want to be solely responsible for developing these ordinances and overlooking a lot of things.
When I have a free week, I'll go through it in detail.
I open to all kinds of suggestions.
I open to all kinds of suggestions in zoning as well.
Yeah.
Well, that's your problem.
Oh, okay. That's what I thought.
So, that one you sent out three, three weeks ago, do you want to send out a new one or the updated? You've been working on it, I know.
No, look, I think the one you had is the, is the latest on Title V.
I've had it for a couple of weeks, so.
Okay, uh, next, I'm gonna pull the next item off the agenda, too. I'm not prepared to talk about that. I did send out the draft of a position description. Lynn sent me at least a, a couple of suggestions. But, um, I, I have a lot more to consider based on.
So you don't want any comment on that, though?
Huh?
You don't want any comment?
We can, we can talk about.
But I just, down the observation I had, I should have responded. But I thought we were, we set the bar pretty low on qualifications of high school or GED. Based on what it says they'd be responsible for and on all the building codes, et cetera, et cetera.
How about some experience in the building industries or trades or something like that? I mean, maybe not a college degree, but trade experience.
I sure, I don't think there's a trade school.
Well, you might have been a plumber, you might have been an electrician, you might have been in construction.
Yeah, I, I think that we need to set the bar a little higher.
Then you're setting the money higher.
Well.
I, the, the GED, the GED, um, or high school diploma GED was basically what I got from, you know, unless you get into a city like Little Rock or Fayetteville or something like that, you know, where they have actual engineers doing it. I mean, most of the small towns around here just have somebody with, you know, somebody with experience.
Somebody that's got, have sense to go around and look and see if something's over, right? Basically, that's what you do.
You know, I, I don't, you know, we don't want to send somebody around that just doesn't know anything. And they wouldn't find a problem or hit them in the face. But, um, but by the same token, the highest paid code enforcement officer that I saw in the wage survey that we got from, uh, from, I think from municipal league, was actually Eureka Springs and it was like fifty-four thousand. And, you know, so you're not gonna be, you're not gonna be hiring an engineer or anything for fifty thousand dollars.
He's not doing a very good job. Isn't that right, Linda? It's a code enforcement, Eureka Springs, but I think there's something.
Oh, I know who you're talking about, but.
I don't think, I don't have, I don't know who it is. I'm just going by some of the places.
Oh, I don't know who it is either.
I don't know who it is either.
I, I guess, I guess you're saying we would interview them and, and pick a good candidate, as good a candidate as we could find.
Yeah.
I don't think we would interview him, the mayor would interview him. I would do this all by myself.
I would, I would say that maybe we would ask, um, the people that have been doing this for several years to, you know, Mickey Finefield is an excellent resource. If he would help us interview the building inspector. He's an architect. He is a legitimate architect and, and, um, I think he'd help us out finding the right candidate.
I, I think you'd need in this job description, uh, well, you say conduct inspections, make recommendations. So this guy has to be able to conduct some kind of an inspection and determine whether it's a health or safety hazard, right?
It violates one of our ordinances.
It violates our, exactly. And.
Well, if they didn't know much about electric stuff or plumbing, how would they know?
Yeah, I mean, they.
I mean, how would they know a code violation, electrical code violation if they don't have some knowledge of that?
I anticipate it's gonna be the same person because, um, I mean, it doesn't have to be. But it's not two full-time jobs. We don't have a full-time code enforcement. We don't have a full-time job for a building inspector. So if there's some way of combining it, I mean, we can.
Why don't you just put, add to this job description thorough knowledge of building codes, electric, plumbing, et cetera, if that's what they're gonna be looking for?
I don't know, I'll give this a thought. I have a lot, I have a lot more input from the, from the code enforcement officer than I do building inspector. But I think there's only one licensed building inspector in Carol County, and that's Green Forest. So, um, I think, I think what you need, um, you know, comes into conflict with what you can afford.
So why do you have to use a, oh, there's only federal loans recognize a licensed building inspector? Is that the deal? For occupancy permits?
The, um, the HUD loans and stuff like that, federally guaranteed loans, uh, require an occupancy permit. And occupancy permits, in my opinion, should be issued by a licensed inspector.
Is that a state law?
I don't know.
So are we planning on paying a building inspector or getting one?
It's only come up one time in my involvement in any of.
I remember a case not a few months ago where someone insisted they had to have an occupancy permit out here for a new house that was built and we had to go find them, the Green Forest guy, right?
That was, you know, probably over a year ago, but.
But that was because their loan.
Because of their loan. They couldn't, they couldn't close on the loan because they didn't have an occupancy permit. And the guy from Green Forest, I, I think maybe, who called? Might have been, oh, I, I know, David Orr was on the DLC at the time. And the question filtered through the DLC, how do we help this person? And so David Orr had the guy from, from, uh, Green Forest come over. And we could probably still do that.
Who is the issuing authority for building, for occupancy permits out here? I mean, we're not issuing them, I guess, right? We made one up for this purpose, for this one instance?
I would assume that, that he used the Green Forest, whatever form he had from Green Forest to.
And wrote.
Issue them.
Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District or something like that.
I would be concerned. Does the city have responsibility? If we approve shoddy work, we issue permits and allow shoddy work to be done? And then somebody, a fire starts and somebody's killed or something?
I don't have a direct answer to that, but I know that the current planning commission does not issue occupancy permits because they don't have the liability insurance to back it up in case something.
That's, that's a good muni league question then, isn't it?
It's probably under municipal amenities stuff.
But we'd need to find out.
They'll know the answer.
Yeah.
I, I'll have to read this. And there may be, I'll have to go back and read the building code again and see if there isn't some disclaimer in there that, that says that, um, the inspection does not relieve the property owner from the responsibility of making sure that work is done correctly or something. Some kind of legal, you know, legalese that says that just because.
CYA.
Yeah, just because the city, um, signed off on this house doesn't mean that we're accepting any liability for the work that was done.
Well, I just know, like, say, when we built our house, we were living five hundred miles away. We'd come every two months to see what was going on. And we felt, we had some confidence that we knew at the time, the district had a building inspector that was watching what was going on. In fact, when we'd be here every couple of months, he probably came around and we'd see.
Well, they did, you know, there, there was two or three different building inspectors, five, and sometimes they had an alternative. You don't have them.
But they may or may not have been licensed, I would bet, huh?
Well, that's, that's why you use licensed contractors is that, you know, that way you know that they're, you know, supposed to be doing things as code. But I may know to follow up on that, come through to see what, um, what kind of liability this, uh, is involved if we issue an occupancy grant. Okay, more work to do on that. But like I said, I, I think the, the big issue is gonna be affordability. Now, there is an option on building inspector. Um, I don't know how, if, I don't know if there's anybody in the area that would qualify. But, you know, we could have our code enforcement officer issue building permits, have the inspection contracted out to a third party.
I mean, you, there, there are people that you can get that inspect your house. I mean, you can have a building inspection before you buy a house.
Yeah.
I did it on my house.
That's, that's different. Home inspection is totally different from this.
Okay.
Because here, here you have to do an inspection of the footings, you know, before they put the foundation on the footings. It's gotta be inspected.
So as it's built versus after someone's lived in it? So as it's built versus after someone's lived in it, you're talking.
Home inspection? Yeah, they, they don't see how the house is put together. They just check on, is it.
What they, what they find is the weather stripping right out on your door. Generally, they don't find anything worth quality.
My inspection was a twenty-page document.
I think the idea of trying to find somebody to contract that inspection out would be a very, that's a good way to go.
And then we, then we build a fee structure that covers.
You pass on the fee. Yeah.
Because you're, you're, you're talking about two very distinct.
Skill sets.
I like that too.
The, you know, the trick is gonna be finding somebody that's qualified and not also doing that kind of work because then it would be possibly be a conflict of interest. So they can't inspect your own work for sure.
But don't you think some of those home inspectors could do that?
Everything I do is good. Everything you do is shitty.
Don't, don't you, don't you think some of those good home inspectors could do that kind of work?
No.
They, they work on contract basis?
The, the type of people that do home inspection, if you, I look for, I look for building inspector information on the internet. There's nothing. You can, there is absolutely nothing available on the internet that defines what a good building inspector does. There are pages and pages and pages and pages of, you know, take my, you know, thirty day course and be a building, be a home inspector. There's, it's, it's not even the same thing. I mean, it's totally different.
Okay. What if we talked to several cities and found out who they use?
Yeah.
And, and what kind of licensing or what kind of qualifications they're using?
Man, you know, somebody that might be helpful. I talked to, to the mayor, P. Ridge. And he's a very, very, very nice, very friendly, very office help us anyway. And they've got about four or five, you said, division.
Just go on.
They must have a couple of building inspectors.
He might have something.
Yeah.
Good.
The, the other thing from the, from the contractor's perspective, whoever's gonna do these inspections needs to be available. Because if, if, you know, if they got a house wired and they're ready to start closing up the walls, they can't wait two weeks for the inspector to get over here to, to do the inspection. So I'm somewhat sympathetic to that too. So anyway, a lot of work to do on that yet in a short period of time. All right, public comments? Any comments coming from the public?
Chat's open. Don't see anything. Anybody have any public comments on the line out here? Most of the people have left.
I left, this is BJ. I left a comment on the chat.
Oh, you did?
I did.
I didn't see it.
Are there any university students studying to become building inspectors who may be graduating soon or in the near future?
She, she says suggest college students that are maybe graduating in that field or something. No college courses for that? Yeah. How does one become a building inspector except by taking the thirty-minute course?
I think the best building inspectors are the retired contractors, doing it for years.
Know the code.
Yeah.
Know the statutes.
And know what to look for.
Well, it was a good thought, BJ.
Thank you.
All right, council member comments?
I have one. We've just established the three wards and part of our responsibility then is to define how those city councilmen will be elected in the future. I've prepared a, a draft of an ordinance that we can consider in future meetings, but wanted to get it out to you folks as soon as you could to, they thinking about it and be prepared to make a choice. Statute forty-four, one oh three has three options in it and they're detailed here in options one, two, and three. So the final ordinance that we would adopt would take just one of those and those would go away. So no discussion tonight. Just wanted to pass it out.
Is that same one that tells what you said? I'm going two years, four years or?
It's in that same statute, yes. But to do it in other than two years, we have to pass an ordinance and it has to be voted upon in a special election by the community. Make it four years. So I don't think we'll be going down there.
It'll be two years then.
Everybody's gonna be two years first time around. They're the same thing.
I think, I think two years is winning.
Right now, I'm thinking it's two months.
So that's for your reading. I didn't send it out electronic.
Thank you so much for doing that.
You're welcome.
I read it a long time ago, but I can't.
Sure. I'll send it out to everyone. I'll send you electronic version in case you have a place to file it.
I quit filing this stuff since I know everything's on the.
Some of us, like, like we're trying to save the planet. Some of us liberals are trying to save the planet.
I'm, I'm taking your read, Jerry. This is the first meeting that came to without my four-inch notebook.
Some other, uh, these two copies. You also have to have original signatures.
Excuse me?
The copies on ordinance, they have to have original signatures.
You told me that you think you have to have two copies of all ordinances, so that's why I put it in there to make sure that we do.
Okay.
So they're two originals. And then that one you're sending something.
So they're filing to get off another amendment.
Okay, so we need more copies.
All right, next meeting, next regular meeting is.
Oh, hang on. I think, Rebecca, do you have a comment?
No.
Your hand is raised. Do I need to read chat? Oh, Rebecca says, University of Arkansas has both architecture and engineering programs. Surely the professors have a clue on code inspectors. Follow up on BJ's comment.
The third Tuesday, November is the sixteenth.
Okay, November sixteenth is the next city council meeting. And we had previously scheduled a budget workshop on the night. All right, anything else? Any announcements?
We need a workshop on this stuff to get it ready to go by December.
Let me know if you think we do, but probably we might extend the budget workshop and include a couple of other things. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I made the motion to adjourn. Jerry second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, we're adjourned.
I thought, I thought it answered eight. No, I didn't. It's after eight o'clock. I didn't say it.